I'd like to call the order of the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 18th, 2018, and if you would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Rulon.
Here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Blackwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Crandall.
Here.
And Chair Brown.
Here. This evening for Item 4, we have Special Orders of Business. Item 4A, our order tonight is a selection of the Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem. In that case, I would like to nominate Commissioner Crandall as Chairman, Commissioner Rulon as Vice Chair, and Commissioner Blackwell as Chair Pro Tem.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes seven zero. With that...
Thank you. Chair Crandall? And under Special Orders of Business, we have Item B, selection of Design Review Subcommittee Members, and I had an observation on Design Review that all the members are currently on the same cycle for reappointment. So there's the potential of either having people with no experience fill in the following year if something should happen, and I would ask that the members of the Commission consider possibly having two permanent members and cycle for probably four meetings a year the balance of the Commission into Design Review. So everybody on Design Review would have an opportunity to see how it functions and would be prepared, should they be available for the following year, to be a permanent member. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a permanent one, but I think in this case it might serve our purposes, so I'd like to present that and have any comment if people want to either say they would serve like in that...
So two permanent members and then the third member be a rotating member?
Rotate, and then we'd still need an alternate.
Okay, two primary, Chair...
Two permanent members.
And a...
Then basically, everyone is a member for a minimum of four meetings a year because there's... Roughly. Twelve months, you figure there's going to be two a month, so 24, probably 20 meetings, and there's four members who would cycle in, so it would be four to five meetings a year. Would the city planner be able to pass out our dates of assignment and maintain that? I... That would be a good, that's a good question. Of course. Okay. I worry a little bit about the logistics of that, but I think... And if not everyone participates in it, they would certainly enjoy...
Is the city attorney comfortable with this?
Very comfortable. Yeah, this is fine. This is in line with the code. We took a look at this earlier. You can do what you want. Have fun.
Did he just say "have fun"?
He did.
He said "have fun", "have fun", that's chilling, those are chilling words.
Now, would this require a motion now, or...
Yes.
So I would make the, and the motion would be to appoint two permanent members, a alternate, and I guess we would have to list all the balance of the Commission as rotating members. Would we vote the rotating member in every quarter or something? Maybe that's the way to do it? It's a new thing, so I'm kind of figuring it out, but... That's a good question. Do we need to do that? I think it might be a good, keep it simple, thing to have just the four members talk to the city planner, and they can say when they'd be available, and work a schedule that best suits the members to show up, and then they would know who to give packets to and prepare them, and it might also then give long-term... Go ahead, Jason. Do we really need an alternate if we're going to have rotating members? Because we could, if everybody's a member of Design... You could pull two in. If everybody's a member of Design Review, then the city planner can make the necessary communication. We may not, that's a possibility. I'm thinking that if one of the permanent members is...
I would recommend that.
Is not there, that would give an automatic one that would step in. So the next person on the list. That works? Does that work? If everyone's comfortable with that? Sure. That makes it easy. Erp?
Okay. They need to know, and we need to communicate, so everybody has some certainty out of this. That's all.
Okay, so we need a motion to appoint two permanent members, and so the whole idea is to mentor the rest of the Commission into understanding what the Design Review Subcommittee is about, give them an opportunity to be there, and it also will help them prepare for meetings when the projects are presented before this Commission, a chance to pre-review them.
Do you have some names in mind to put in play?
So I would say, I would like to continue to serve as a member and have Jim Rulon, who's been the longest active member on, in two terms, on the Design Review Subcommittee as permanent members, and the balance as...
As Chair.
As Chair. I would step down from being Chair of Design Review and welcome Jim in to step into the Chair position. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes seven zero. The next item is selection of a Coastal Advisory Committee member. I have heard that Jen is interested possibly in doing that. Do we have, would... I just moved down a block away, but if Zen wants to, by all means. Well, we're open to multiple appointments. Zen wants to, okay, have at it. There's a problem with pigeons. Then I will nominate Zen to be our representative on the Coastal Commission.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes seven zero. The next item of business is the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. One is the study session of June 20th, 2018. Do we have any revisions or comments or a motion?
I move we approve the study session, June 20th, 2018.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. We do have two abstentions, actually. Thank you very much. Bless you. So it would be five zero two. We have a second set of minutes from the regular Planning Commission hearing of June 20th, 2018. Anybody have any corrections or changes? I have one that I would suggest. One is on page eight, one is on page nine, and on page eight, there's a statement, "We supported adding a condition to ensure the murals remain a San Clemente Beach theme", and I think it would be more appropriate, and it did happen in the meeting. We supported with the applicant's approval to, about a condition to ensure the murals remain a San Clemente Beach theme, because we did ask the applicant if they would accept that, and we weren't mandating it. And that also occurs on page nine, the very top one, that we added a condition as agreed to by the applicant to require that the proposed mural shall remain a San Clemente Beach theme. So if we have a motion with those two changes? I will move we accept the minutes with those two changes. Second? Do we have a second? Second by Jen? All in favor?
Aye.
That should pass five zero two. Thank you. I should pull this out of the ring button here. The next item is oral and written communications. I see we have one card. Members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the City and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes, and if you are interested in speaking, provide a card to the Recording Secretary. Do we have any?
No.
Next.
Somebody's hand raised.
Did we have, somebody's hand raised on that?
Someone just spoke.
Oh, okay, very good. We will welcome that during that item. Consent calendar, we have none. We will go to the public hearing. Time limitation for applicants is 10 minutes, all other speakers three minutes. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to the questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Our first item, Item A, zoning amendment, 17203, regulations of murals on private property, and we have Planner Stonich making a presentation.
Good evening. So tonight, we have prepared a zoning amendment for your consideration. This is on murals as they relate to non-residential private property. So at the direction of the City Council in May of 2017, the Planning Commission and staff held several study sessions and discussed the regulation of murals on private property. Based on that direction, the planning, that the Planning Commission gave us, and with the information and input from the public, staff prepared a draft ordinance to amend the definition of murals and to set forth a process for mural permits. So we previously discussed that the City currently allows mural signs and painted signs, and we regulate those consistently with commercial advertising. We also currently allow murals and have been processing them with a discretionary permit. However, based on current case law, murals have to be processed ministerially. This means administratively and no Design Review or other subjective review. So we discussed in the study session several options that reflect the current case law. Based on the Commission's direction, we opted to pursue the second option at this time, and that is to regulate the time, place, and manner of murals through an objective checklist. So our proposed code amendments that you have before you will update the definitions and of mural and set forth parameters for an objective checklist as part of the mural With this code amendment, we propose to revise the definition so it's consistent with case law. It applies to non-commercial displays and has included different media and mediums to allow artistic flexibility with a mural. The checklist that will be part of the mural permit will include quantifiable objectives. The checklist will allow staff to review an application over the counter and issue this permit ministerially. So based on input from the study sessions, staff has prepared this checklist so that we can look at those that, over the counter. An errata sheet before you tonight also includes two, your expiration and maintenance and renewal information, which was inadvertently omitted from the first version. The draft amendment has been prepared that will amend the outdated mural definitions and include the requirement to obtain a mural permit based on the criteria set forth in that checklist. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolutions before you in the errata sheet, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
I have one. On page three of the revised staff report, I'm just looking at under other special considerations, shall not include illumination, electrical, or moving components. I just wanted to make sure that wouldn't exclude just normal, say, gooseneck lighting to illuminate the mural at night. Is that allowed or not under this?
It's a good question. The mural itself, those things could be overseen by design of a building, but we didn't want to have flashing lights, different types of lighting that might not be consistent with what we're, our intent.
I mean, I could see, I could see not incorporating lights into the mural itself, but to illuminate the mural, you know, I wouldn't want to necessarily exclude that.
I don't think that's something we want to exclude. I think you're right.
Okay.
Just that the mural itself, it should be worded so that the mural itself cannot be illuminated itself, or flashing, rotating, that type of thing.
Right.
However, exterior lighting, uplighting, that might be done with a sign or some other type of lighting, is consistent with how we process signs, murals, this time.
Yeah, exactly. So, now would this exclude that, or should we put some kind of more specific statement in there?
Yeah, the language being referred to is in the one, two, three, four, five, sixth column, correct?
Yes, third item down.
That could be clarified. Let me, while we're speaking, work through some language that I think better clarifies that, because the idea is that we don't want the mural itself to be electronic, some kind of reader, but we're okay with it being illuminated at night so it can be seen by pedestrians or passersby.
Exactly.
Illuminated by non-incorporated lighting.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell?
I was just going to make a motion.
We have four big...
Commissioner Tally?
Yeah, I'll say for, we'll have discussion, correct?
Yes.
We have public input in this one, but I have no questions.
Okay, so no more comments or questions for the applicant? I've got one concern. If we have existing murals, let's, an example would be the Al Rentschito, which has three murals along the top of their tower. They become non-conformable. Are they going to have to apply for renewals, or are they just grandfathered in for as long as they need?
They are existing non-conforming. Other than the four that are in the process or have gone through recent discretionary where they've signed a waiver and will have to come to the new process within two years, those existing, that have a permit are existing legal non-conforming. If there were one that was up that did not have a permit, that would be addressed through code compliance.
Very good. Thank you.
Does that answer?
Okay. Any other questions? We will close the presentation portion and open it to public comment. Do we have a card, Eileen?
Yes, sir.
And I think we have one more in the front row.
This is...
Is it Marion Siegel?
Marika.
Marika, that's very good. Go ahead and step up to the microphone.
Good afternoon, Council. The reason why I'm here is that Amy was kind enough to email me about the, your meeting today, and the reason why I'm here is about a year and a half ago, two years ago, I began the permit process of getting a mural up, right where Pedro's Tacos is on the north side here. It's, it would be a mural that would face their parking lot, and successfully, I've been able to get the owner of the building on board. She was very much for it. The thing is, is that with the previous permit process, I haven't been able to get the required signature of the landowner of, who rents out his land to the Pedro's Restaurant, and I was wondering if there was a way, I tried finding out if there was an easement between their property and the woman's property. Her name is Kathy, who owns the building that I'm going to do the mural process on. I was just wondering if there was a way where I didn't have to get his signature in order to set up my equipment and eventually do the mural, but I, but it hasn't even gone to, to the process of the actual mural designs being approved yet because I haven't been able to get a signature. And I tried talking to him, and I also tried talking to the guy who owns the Pedro's business, and they're against the mural being there because they think it's going to be a liability against them, and I don't see how that could be because I think it would actually help their business and attract more customers to them, but they don't see it that way. And I guess my main question is, since I'm under a time limit here, is if there's a way I can get the mural up without having to get their signature, and also, the FAM also rents out the building as well, and if there was a way I could somehow make the mural, somehow, since they're a charitable organization, if the mural can be done with them to where it can get up, basically, that, that's all I've got to say, so, sorry.
Thank you very much. Any other quest, people who wish to speak? We will close the public comment portion and open it for discussions. Commissioner Tally?
Sorry, this is where the attorney in me kind of comes out. So I'm very much in favor of a mural package here. I think it's great. My, my concern lies in the distinction that we're making between commercial and non-commercial speech, and, you know, I, I think, even as we just heard in the last presentation, when talking about making something for FAM or doing something for somebody else, that it creates, it takes away from this objective process that we're trying to do, because as soon as we limit the type of speech that we're talking about here, it ceases to become objective and it becomes subjective. So what is commercial, what is non-commercial speech? And I recognize some of the, some of the legal guidance that we received in this packet today, but I also, you know, I, I have a candidly, you know, a, because I'm an officer of the court, it's sworn duty to defend the Constitution of the United States regardless of what we may have from direction from the Ninth Circuit, and I don't believe that we can legally make a distinction between commercial and non-commercial speech in the way that we are here today. And so I would support this, and I'd support this resolution, I'd support the zoning change, or the code change, but I believe that we have to remove the non-commercial aspect of it. it.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, so my question is for Amy. And my, my question is, Amy, when an applicant approaches the counter and applies for a mural permit, is there a notification process?
No.
There's not. So we're not looking for approval or support from surrounding property owners?
That's correct.
Okay. And do we require that the property owner actually authorize such a mural?
Yes, sign the application.
So to the speakers, to answer the speaker's question, we would definitely want to secure that approval from the property owner. It's a good thing, and I think it's, it's, it's good to speak with the neighbors, but it's not a requirement that the neighbors approve.
Right. That's exactly right. In the case of this particular application, she's on a zero lot line and has the building approval for the building to put, to apply it on the building it will be on, however not the ability to go onto someone else's property. And so there it lies.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just have one more question. And I'm sorry, I should have asked this earlier. So somebody comes in, they apply for the permit, you grant it if they meet the checklist items that are here. What happens if it is commercial? How, how do you deal with that? Let's say that we adopt this ordinance, it goes through city council, and it's got a big, you know, sign for a Coke bottle under it.
So it has to be discernible at the counter. We talked quite a bit about it in the study sessions, and I do have some photos I could go through if you wanted to take a look.
Well, no, I'm just curious what you do.
Oh.
How do you determine whether it's commercial or non-commercial?
It's advertising, so for example, the name of the business, the Coke might not necessarily, because it says Coca-Cola, but if it was a bottle of pop, no. If it says Coca-Cola, yes. Sure, there's gray areas, but it, this should be something that...
That's my problem, is it's, there's gray areas. And so let's, let's go on to murals that we see, that I like to see, that have vehicles on them, you know, old vehicles that, you know, candidly, you see some of those as, as kind of vintage ads today for some cars, whether that's Ford or Chevy. What do we do about that? How do we discern what is commercial versus what isn't commercial? How does the counter figure that? I mean, I feel bad for people at the counter, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand how we...
I don't see that as being commercial. You mean if it were on a dealership or something of that sort?
Perhaps that's, you know, I was thinking anywhere, whether it's a dealership or not, because now we're dealing with where it's located, right?
Right.
Content.
Right. So a vehicle would not be commercial?
I would have to, I would have to say...
Buick, and that would just be an antique car.
But therein lies my, my, my issue. I think the murals are great. I want murals, and I want to support it. I just, and when we get time to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we amend it to remove that language.
Okay. I would say that it, that seems to approach a billboard advertising Ford or Chevy, or, I mean, it could be inferred that way. Commissioner Ruhl?
Yeah, so the young lady who spoke, I just want to make sure I understand the issue. There's permission on the building for her to paint, but she would need to be on someone else's property in order to actually do the painting.
That's correct.
And that person, they need permission, and they could effectively block the mural because they have the right to say, you can or can't come on our property. Is that...
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I don't, I don't know that there's anything, that's just a kind of a unique situation. I don't know there's anything that we can do about, about that. People have the right to say, you can or can't come on their property, so unfortunately. Yeah, and this distinction of commercial versus non-commercial, I think, I appreciate the thought and the argument. It's, the problem is, is it gets to be a bit of a sticky wicket because I think that there's going to be a lot of obvious circumstances. When something's commercial, someone puts their logo on it or something like that. But if we say, once we say we allow commercial use, suddenly we've completely undermined our city's sign ordinance. And at that point, we kind of can't have a mural ordinance because then we don't have a sign ordinance either. So I, I think as long as our city attorney is comfortable with doing counter approvals of making that judgment, this is commercial versus non-commercial, then I think we're probably okay. But it looks like you want to chime in on that, so.
We've talked at length in the study sessions about, about these issues. And as, as was made clear in those, in those meetings, the only perfectly safe approach is just not to have murals. Right? If you have no murals, or you allow all murals, then, then we know that we're safe. With no murals, there, there are obvious problems because there are those that want to have murals. If we allow all murals, there are problems. You just stated those problems. It essentially obviates the, the entire code. The difficulty with, as Commissioner Tally points out, with counter approvals is when you get into the gray area. And when it comes to the First Amendment, gray areas are not areas you want to be in. Now, we talked previously about the Reed decision from about two years ago, Supreme Court decision. Subsequent to that decision, there have been two circuit court cases, a Ninth Circuit court case and a Fourth Circuit court case, which came to different conclusions on the commercial, non-commercial decision. The Ninth Circuit went the way that we're going, the Fourth Circuit went a different way. The Supreme Court denied cert, or in other words, didn't take up those cases and allowed them to lie. At some point, they, they, they will decide a case that resolves that split between the circuits. Until then, we, we are kind of in this no man's land where our circuit allows this, but there is that gray area. And again, when it comes to gray area, you're never 100% free from potential liability, right? A lawsuit could lie at some point. We feel fairly certain that we're in a good place, basically the Ninth Circuit, but as, as I had a conversation previously with Jason, our circuit is notoriously...
Different.
Different, sure, it's different. We tend to be kind of out there. So this is, this is an area of law that is always in flux. Again, the only perfectly safe route or routes are either no murals or all murals.
Thank you. So given that and what we talked about in our previous study sessions, and the fact that in our general plan, we encourage our, in public places, and we want this sort of thing, you know, I think that the, maybe the guidelines or instructions, and perhaps this is something to add for whoever's doing the counter approvals, is, is that you, you err on the side of, of allowing it. So there'll be some obvious things, someone tries to put their logo in, but that would probably allow people who are clever to put little bits and pieces of their logo somewhere in the artwork. I am not keen on that, but I'd rather have that and have the murals, because I think the only other alternative is to not have a mural ordinance, which would actually violate our general plan. And, and so, because we need to protect our sign ordinance, and without that, we don't have much of a sign ordinance. So, so I tend to, you know, be in favor of this, and we can certainly give it a try, and if there's a problem, then we, then we change it.
Okay. Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, I was just going to say, there's some images up on the screen now to Commissioner Tally's concern, questions regarding, you know, how staff looks at it and the differences between the two. We're on that slide deck now. We could actually toggle between a few and have that discussion. I just want to point that out that it was here, but you brought it up before I even had a chance to turn my button off.
Commissioner Tally?
And don't misunderstand me. I, I fully appreciate that we don't want this type of advertising to, to occur. My, my problem lies with the slippery slope, which is, you know, I, I hold the First Amendment very dear, and I know everybody does, but, but the slippery slope is, once you start, once you start letting government regulate some of that speech and have content-based restrictions and have discretion on what somebody views as advertising versus what somebody doesn't, and somebody snuck, somebody snuck a logo in somewhere and somebody didn't, that is, personally, I, I just believe that, you know, it's our job as stewards and government to, to try to protect that. And, you know, the Ninth Circuit is probably more deferential towards government than some of the other districts in the United States. And that's probably the word that we're looking for is deferential towards government, and they intend, or they tend to empower government to, to be more interested or involved in, in certain things than other circuits might do. Whether that, whether you agree or disagree with that, I think that's, that's a representation, and I, I've said my piece on that. I understand, I believe that that is commercial. I think when I look at it, I can tell what's commercial, what's not commercial, but the problem is, is that I don't want to be in that position of determining that for somebody. I don't think it's fair to place our staff in that position, and, and I'm not sure that it's consistent with the law of the land, so.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I, one is better than the enemy are good enough. What's the cost of perfect information? It's infinite. So when is, I tend to, I fall down or agree with Commissioner Ruhl, and we have a sign ordinance, a general plan, and ultimately at the counter, there's just, you have to trust the staff to have you some common sense. And we can, what if this forever? And eventually, I think as the city attorney has pointed out, the Supreme Court's got to step in with these two circuits that are, have come down on either side for clarification and clarity, which time we could revisit. And for me, I think we've gone through fourth study session, one of which was a presentation by the city attorney. So I think we're in a comfortable place. I mean, is it, is it perfect? No. But I think we, we have gotten to the point where better than the enemy are good enough. So I think I would support the, with the additional wording that I think was bounced between the two attorneys here. So that's kind of where I, I sit on is, thank you.
Very good. I see no more lights. I would say that, I think this addresses what was requested by city council to us. I think this is going to be a living ordinance and is going to be changed over and over and over again as things come to light. But I think it makes us in compliance with the current case law, which is important. But I feel there's an awful lot of things we don't address, and maybe you can answer my question. Freeway visible and freeway oriented, and the fact, is it a billboard? Is it not a billboard? We've got some highway issues when that occurs. Can we have more than one on a site, not with this ordinance, but I think there may be in the future, applications that appear, maybe we need to change that. So I will certainly support this at this point in time, but I think it's going to be revised numerous times in the future. But I think we need to get this done and passed and get us in compliance.
I just have a quick point of order for the city attorney. Do we define non-commercial in our code?
No, I don't think that it's defined.
Because the previous sign ordinance was very specific on what advertising was. Right? That's advertising, no doubt about.
Well, there's portions of this that are advertising. We went through a study session where we talked about what is and what isn't. Oh, I'll stop.
No, 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 I, but, but we have good definition in the current code.
I don't know. I'm looking it up right now. Commissioner Tally?
A lot of time, the zoning code has the definition, and it also says a lack of a specific definition, and then we resort back to the Merriam-Webster dictionary.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, well, did you find it, Mel?
I haven't found it, but just one, one point to Commissioner Tally's point is, you know, even with the definition of commercial versus non-commercial, I've, I've tried to draft these definitions for other jurisdictions in drafting sign codes. It's an impossible task. The Supreme Court grapples with commercial versus non-commercial speech, and they, they can't define it. So there may be definition, if there is, it's scant consolation when it comes to the gray areas confronted at the counter that Commissioner Tally is concerned with, but I'll, I'll look for it.
Very good. Commissioner Brown?
I guess a comment to staff, which would address the young lady who came in here tonight, is, because you're going to be faced with, this checklist is going to have a subset coming at you, I would think, similar to that. And that, the only thing I could offer is for staff to recommend to the applicant in that case is to try to get the two property owners together. I don't know if that should be a subset asterisk to the checklist when you come into this zero lot line. Because we have a lot of zero lot line issues in the city. And so that either Mary Jane Perdue from FAM or the building owner, that's the lady most to work for, can go talk to the building owner of the other property and say, would you consider? That's the only thing I could, because I think you're going to come up with that, that situation numerous times as this thing goes forward. So that, that, that's where it has to go to the property owner versus property owner for resolution, I would think. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Commissioner Wu?
I just want to find out from the city attorney what the revised language on illumination.
So I have written down here, shall not include integrated illumination, electrical, moving components, but may be illuminated by non-integrated lighting.
Okay. Yeah, as long as, yeah, as long as we're, that's clear in a legal sense, that we're just, you know, making it more visible, so.
If that's okay, then I'd like to make a motion.
Well, you got some more comments here. Commissioner Tally?
So I want to get behind this ordinance and be able to vote yes for it. So I want to make sure, and perhaps, perhaps it's something that can be done with a straw vote so that I feel, feel comfortable with this. It is not the intent of this ordinance to prohibit incidental or accidental commercial use. So if somebody has a Coke that's in there and it's not being advertising for Coke, or somebody has, what I talked about with vehicles, that's not considered commercial use unless it's, I, I hesitate to use the word overt because that's content-based in and of itself, but, you know, what we see right here on our screen, you know, poison spider bicycles, that's a sign, right? And that's advertising, that's a directional sign, that's a, you know...
It's a painted sign.
To my point, if somebody's drinking a can of Coke because they've got, you know, a, you know, a motif of people sitting around a campfire or they're, you know, something like that, I, I mean, first of all, they're going to have their own trademark issues that they have to deal with. But secondly, I don't think that's the intent of what we're trying to prohibit here. And, and I think that the record is very important, and the legislative intent that we have here is very important, which is why, if that's agreeable to this body, it would be nice to have, it doesn't need to be part of the formal process, but it would be nice to make sure that that's where our minds are at. And with that, I think I could support it, not that...
And we are making a recommendation to city council to approve this. So I think we can give direction to staff to make sure that that is accomplished.
Okay. Is that, Commissioner Wu, do you have more comment or a question?
Yeah, Mr. Tally, do you have specific language to attach to the motion?
The only language in the motion that I would feel comfortable is removing the term "non-commercial," but I'm comfortable with the kind of dicta or the legislative verbiage that we talk about here that leads to passage or forwarding of this motion, discussing the fact that the non-commercial aspect of this is, you know, if there's incidental or accidental commercial features to it, that's not what we're trying to regulate. It's we're trying to stop a billboard from occurring, or a directional sign, or something that violates the sign code which it controls. That's not something that I'd incorporate into the, into the actual, into the actual resolution. It's something that I would view as, as long as that language exists, when this goes up to city council as part of our recommendation, then I'm comfortable with that. And I could get behind the ordinance, even though I still am concerned about the constitutionality of it.
Let me clarify, you want the motion to say that the intent of this amendment is not to prohibit incidental and accidental commercial?
I don't want to modify the amendment, or the resolution. I want our notes and our minutes to reflect that we're not attempting to regulate incidental or accidental commercial use.
So for the record, we want to show that it is not our intent to violate the Second Amendment.
First.
For the First Amendment.
First, excuse me. We don't need to violate the Second either. But, sorry. Anyway, while we're on the subject.
It could be a sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Okay. So do we have someone who would like to...
No, I'm going to make a move.
Well, actually, real quick, that works for me, just FYI, so, so I'm good with that.
Thank you guys for humor.
But, no problem. It's not, it's not human, I think it's a, it's a good point. But really, Bart, I just wanted to bring up, you had said, I think, at one of the previous study sessions, about maybe passing on to city council that in the future, we might want to be looking at how this might be affected by architectural overlay areas or anything like that. or anything like that. I just, I didn't know if you would miss that.
Well, that's what I said, this is a living one. I've always been a proponent for having districts for murals. Certain districts would be treated differently. As far as sign, size, I don't know if we can do it, but it would be because of the architecture, not because of the sign itself. It would be, it needs to be integrated into the architecture. Other areas may not need it integrated into the architecture.
Did you want to pass that on to city council as, as a recommendation to have directors to that?
I think it'll be in the minutes from, from that. And like I say, I think this is a living document we're going to see for the next couple of years. Mel, do you have any comment on that?
No, that's, that is permissible. In fact, larger cities like New York City have signed districts. For example, Times Square is a signed district. The Port of San Diego, a client of mine, they have signed districts where specialized regulations are permitted, because they recognize that in those areas, it's, it's different. So you can certainly forward that to the council and have them look at that.
Yeah, I'd like to have a comment in there, so they could, I don't, I want to still move something along tonight. We can't solve that problem tonight. But that, if they're comfortable with it, to authorize studying that and possibly incorporating that in the near future.
Pick the service owner or something like that.
Absolutely. Okay, I think Jen was going to make a motion.
I'm going to move to adopt a resolution number PC 18 dash 019, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, recommending that the city council make sequel findings and adopt a ordinance for a city initiated amendment, ZA 17 dash 203 of the city of San Clemente municipal code, chapter 17.84, sign regulations to include a mural permit, and a chapter 17 dot 88 dot 030 definitions, to amend the definition of murals.
Second. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
We have to introduce, right, the new language? We're going to amend the language.
With the new language, saying that on column six on page three, on column six, other special considerations regarding the illumination, the third item says, shall not include, Mel, can you read that?
Shall not include integrated illumination, electrical or moving components, but may be illuminated by non-integrated lighting.
And also the corrections that we were given on the dais.
Thank you.
And do we have a, do you have that?
I have, thank you.
Okay, very good. And we have a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Brown, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, uh, seven, zero.
Along the journey, Amy, along the journey.
And our next item is item 8B, amendment to discretionary sign permit 9870, Arco Master Sign Program. Jonathan Lightfoot is our planner on this one.
Ms. Ealing, would you be able to direct me to our folder for planning commission presentation?
It should be, it's in the same folder as our last meeting, the shared.
It should be, it's in the same folder as our last meeting, the shared. No, it is in S drive.
It is in S drive, okay.
Unfortunately, I've only used it once before, and I'm forgetting the correct.
I think that's the city council.
So it's, it's not under planning specifically, it's under planning permission for, so not planning department, but planning commission. So, yeah, it would be in the S drive.
Yeah. So.
Okay, let's, let me take a quick look. Apologies for the delay. Okay, we shut off that one. Okay. You may just forego that.
No, it was just up there, I know I don't see it either.
Well, I.
Where is that one?
Yeah, this is something regarding a pickleball, that's not the presentation that I have.
Right, but where is that one located?
I'll check one spot, and then we'll just forego it if it's, if I don't see it. Hey, hey.
Hey, hey, hey. See, it's P there. Is that C or C?
We're in business.
Apologies for the delaying, thank you for bearing with me. Good evening, commissioners, so the proposal in front of you is for an amendment to a master sign program. In the process of working on this project, I discovered that there was a master sign program in place from 1998, so I did include that as a part of the attachments for this project. There were a variety of modifications that occurred throughout, so I'll walk through what we're looking at today. So the proposal just is for modifications to some signage on site at a service station. It's an Arco service station off north El Camino Real, at the northernmost entry point to the city. The site's located at the intersection of Camino Capistrano and coastal El Camino Real, across from Pochi County Beach and the Shore Cliffs Beach Club. It's in the neighborhood commercial 1.1 zoning district in a part of the coastal zone overlay district. And you can see here from the maps, that red line on the vicinity map to the right is the city border and boundary between San Clemente and Dana Point. The image to the left is the existing site of that service station. Proposed modifications, in brief, include painting the existing fascia dark pearl, replacing internally illuminated Arco logo spark signs on the canopies with new pin mounted channel letters and spark logos, replacing the existing gas dispenser signs with new signs and new sign decals on the pumps to identify station, current station branding. So a couple of slides upcoming that just detail the existing and proposed. The existing banding here, blue and white, is going to be modified to be the dark pearl location or color that you see on the right. The canopies will also be painted that matching dark pearl color. Signage would be modified, as shown here, where there is channel letters and the spark logo, both from the plansets that you have, would show that they're to be halo illuminated, which was a modification that came out of the DRSC instead of internal illumination. Dispenser signs existing again on the left, and the proposed modification is in keeping again with the current branding for Arco. The initial proposal was to have this illuminated, but that was modified before this, so the current proposal no longer includes that illumination, which was a concern through DRSC for dark skies, especially given the location right across from the beach. So wrapping up conclusions, so the applicants have modified the project to address the DRSC comments that were raised at that meeting, and staff does recommend approval based off of the information that's contained within the staff report. So I would recommend approval subject, or I would recommend that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15, 311, for accessory structures, and adopt resolution PC 18 dash 018, approving this amended discretionary sign permit for the Arco master sign program. That concludes the presentation, but I am available for questions, as is the applicant, Eddie Vidalas.
Commissioner Ruenen?
Yeah, last I checked, the, there were the window signs that were not in conformance, code conformance, were up. Have they been removed, or are they still up at this time?
They are still up at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tally?
Were all of the comments from the DRSC incorporated? Were there any that weren't?
No, they were all incorporated. There were four specific comments, and staff report details how those were all addressed.
I, and you prob, I don't know, were you involved in the DRSC hearings? So the, one of the things I noticed, that the backlit signs are using LEDs for, for their backlighting on the halo signs. Did we discuss color temperature, or did you discuss color temperature?
We, we didn't, you mean the pin mounted signs?
Yeah, the pin mounted signs, sorry.
Those, no, because they were originally, in the DRC, they were internally illuminated.
Okay.
And we'd asked for them to be pin mounted.
See, I do pay attention on the color temperature, yeah. So have we addressed color temperature on those?
No, we have not to this point. Do, is there a specific direction that you'd like to be incorporated into?
I would defer to Commissioner Ruenen's expertise on that, but I know we have talked about that before, and that was, the higher color temperatures were specifically problematic. And I know when we looked at the outlet mall signs, which I believe were ultimately approved the color temperature, we wanted that sub 3,000, correct? Like 2,700, something like that, is that?
I was going to say 3,000 plus or minus a little bit.
Certainly less than 3,000, if we can do 2,700 or even less in terms of the color temperature. Basically, the cooler, the better. If we, and I had to recuse from that, so if, if it was 2,700 for the outlet signs, then I think it'd be fair to request 2,700 for those, or less for the pin mounted sign.
Rather than give a temperature, so we're consistent?
Yeah.
Well, consistent with the temperature of the outlet malls.
Yeah, that's what we have so far, that's kind of our base knowledge. Oh, I see, just.
Sure, I'll do that research.
All right, and just make sure, is the applicant, is okay with that condition?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wu?
Yes, Jonathan, there ongoing code compliance issue regarding the window sign?
No, not currently, there's not a code case open. Generally, how we would approach this is that there is a condition of approval tied directly towards removal of any temporary signs on site that are not permitted. So that would have to be addressed before any sign permits are issued. They would still need an administrative sign permit, building permit for these new signs. And before they can have those issued, they would have to demonstrate that those temporary signs have been removed.
Right, okay, I understand those are conditions to receive a building permit for these signs. But it appears to me, the city is not actively enforcing those codes, and instead just use a building permit as a leverage to get them inclined. A lot of times, so if they don't need a building permit, we just leave them as it. Is that how we do it?
No. Commissioner Wu, our code enforcement in San Clemente tends to be reactive, meaning that we respond to complaints. Certainly, we could have code enforcement deal with these window signs, if they're of a concern to the commission. We also could certainly talk to code enforcement staff about being more proactive on cases that are scheduled for commission review too, if that is your preference. But, but we don't have the staff resources to actively monitor all the businesses in the city and proactively search out violations.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Blackwell?
Would I like to entertain a motion?
Do we have any comment? We need to open, we'll close the presentation portion, open it to public comment. We have one person who wishes to speak on this, Eddie Vidalas. He is the applicant.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Like Jonathan said, my name's Eddie Vidalas, I'm with the sign contractor out of Anaheim Donko and Sons. Again, Jonathan and I went around and around with this project to get it to where we're at. As the applicant, as the representative for the Arco, we feel like we, we gave up a lot in regards to what this project was. The project is called Luminet. It was throughout Southern California, Donko themselves did about 200 of these stations, where it focused on reimagining the canopy, reimagining the fascia, the dispensers. And of course, every other city had their conditions, of course, to clean up the site, windows, signage, what have you. And we've complied. I think we've complied with what the cities wanted. And again, you know, we're, we're thankful for being heard and for Jonathan's help on getting this thing put together. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Please.
Is the applicant aware that they are in violation with the window signs that they currently have?
Yes, yes, we've advised the owner and Arco themselves, so both parties are aware that the window signage will have to be addressed upon this, completing this project. And then when it comes time to getting a final, we kind of told them that you will not be able to get a final if you do not comply with your window signage. Kind of a way that we do it to push them, so that the project can get closed out.
But yet they still have the window signage up right?
And they probably will pull it up after too.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I mean, I, I won't be able to stop them from, you know, two months, three months from now, put them back up.
I appreciate you.
You know what I mean? I mean, that's the truth.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will close the presentation portion.
Thank you.
Open the public comment, any public comment on this item? I see none, so we will open it for discussion, and we had a little discussion during presentation. Any questions at this point? Then we will.
I.
You were quicker.
So first, just from the DRSC perspective and working with the applicant, I think he, they really did conform to many things we asked for. One of the things to look at is that, is that this is right next to open space, you know, the water. There's, you know, natural resources issues, repairian issues. So, you know, the fact that we also have a condition that the applicant agrees to, that the city planner has the right to turn down the, the light intensity. That's condition number 11, I think, is very good for, a very good policy for that kind of an area that is right on the edge there of, of open space. So all that's great, I appreciate them working with us with the color temperature. As far as all the things we've done, the, the sign program itself with, as it's conditioned, I'm good with. What I have a concern about is these non-conforming, or not, not conforming, but the, the temporary signs that are, that are out of compliance, that, and the applicant knows that. You know, we put in these, these conditions so that we can make the findings. And if we have these conditions that say, well, you have to take this down, and the, and I know certainly this gentleman has no control over it, but if the owner is someone who clearly is going to leave those signs up every chance they get, then the question I have is, is are these conditions going to be followed by the applicant, even if they agree to them? And I guess one question I have from Mel is, if I look at condition eight, if I'm reading that correctly, it's, it's because we're conditioning it to say, you will comply, comply with temporary sign ordinances in town. If they don't comply, does that mean we have more authority than just code enforcement? Can we then say, you know, in a worst case scenario, the master sign program is canceled? And you, you don't no longer have a master sign program?
Can I make a quick point on, on that? Because it's specific.
No, no, okay.
For Mel too. We've done conditional approvals before that tie to other language, it gives the code enforcement authority to, if they violate that, then the conditional use permit goes away.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's what you're referring to, right?
That's the question I'm asking, I want to make sure, I'm, I'm asking is, is that the, the authority that we have as a result of that condition in this? If they, if they are in violation, that we actually have that as a route to cancel the MSP?
This is referring to condition 10?
Uh, well, eight and 10, yes, so 10, 10 also.
Yeah, so if, if the applicant is in violation of the zoning ordinance with regard to window signs pursuant to 10, this permit can be revoked. Now, it's not automatic. Revocation has to go through a hearing process, but, but certainly, any violation of a condition can be brought back to planning commission for revocation pursuant. Very strict.
So this does give us more weight, or a bigger stick, if you will, than just code compliance and fines and that sort of thing?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, good, thank you.
We'll go to Commissioner Blackwell first.
Thank you, and that would apply to any conditional use, by the way. Any violation of a condition is subject to that, yeah. I was gonna make a motion.
I think-
It sounds like we have more-
Commissioner Tally and you are waiting.
You are just right on top of the motions tonight.
So my question is, we had this discussion about code enforcement issues, and I took a, you know, a stance that we were adding, you know, remember we had like 20 code enforcement provisions that were being put on applications that had nothing to do with signage? And we were tying it, we were taking the stance, and I don't have a condition of approval, but we were taking a stance that by agreeing to the condition of approval, you were subjecting yourself to a different code section, or a different enforcement section, other than the section that we were referring to here, which gave the code enforcement officer the ability to waive the 14-day notice and to, and to find that, once that occurred, that they could revoke the conditional use permit. Do you remember that, Mel? And I could look up an older-
I don't, I apologize.
That was very recent, where Adam Otamian himself, code enforcement came in with about six or seven, kind of boulder played things they were going to incorporate going forward.
Yeah, I know he's done that, I know Mel isn't really 100% certain that that's accurate. One of the things, well, first of all, even if you have a condition, Adam can't revoke anybody's permits. There's a process in the zoning code to do that. We would have to demonstrate that we've given them the opportunity to cure the violation, that maybe it had happened numerous times, and then we could schedule it for a public hearing. And so the applicant obviously would be able to present their point of view, staff could present theirs. So moving forward, I think what you're going to see in our conditions of approval is we're going to start having a standard condition that basically requires the applicant to comply with all applicable provisions of the San Clemente Municipal Code. And that way, if there is a violation of some sort, we could use that as a basis to consider revocation proceedings of a CUP.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's exactly what I asked for, so thank you. But in this case, I was thinking, you know, since we have-
Why haven't we had that before? It's inferred. That's not good enough.
So, thank you.
Inferred is not good enough.
Oh, you got it. Okay.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, my comments is, this is an enforcement issue, the planning condition, but let's say, I was just told that the city reacts to complaints. Now, what if the applicant finished the project and then put these window signs back? And the city, nobody complains, the city doesn't go after them. So, so it's tough. Because if you look at those window signs, this is a lot of the most egregious violation. And those window signs are all over the issue. So if we merely react to, react to complaints without doing anything, nothing stops the applicant putting them back. And I would suggest we add a condition that we have someone to review, revisit the site from time to time, I don't know, maybe. A lot of time, we will review something in six months, but this is a little different. Even though they violate that window sign again, we can't revoke it anymore, because it's already been built. And I like the new sign design, but that's a different story.
Okay, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I'd, I would make a comment, or I'd appreciate maybe a sense of the commission to the city planner. I understand that code compliance is more reactive, but maybe there's a message to sit down with the director of community development, and also controls the code enforcement branch, that maybe we should consider that code enforcement be a little more proactive in our gateway areas, that we have a special chapter we build into our general plan for gateways. Now, this one, Jonathan kind of worked his way, this is semi-gateway, not really there, kind of sort of, but shoulda, coulda, woulda, and it kind of is a gateway. And we, so we, we kind of went soft on it a little bit, but I think Design Review tried to treat it that way. But I think, I sense that code enforcement should be proactive in our gateway areas, because we're adding a lot of requirements to people, applicants that come into the city and want to do something in our gateway areas, like Starbucks there on Pico. And so they went off and they got Henry Linney as an architect. And so, that's a sense, I was kind of, kind of, a solution to what Mr. Wu was talking for, is maybe it's time that they just put gateways in their scan and just drive out there and look. Is a suggestion that I would- Yeah, and I think to do that, we should probably, at some point, give a comment to city council to direct staff to do that. We can't really do, because the cost of- Suggest that the city planner have a discussion with- City probably move that forward, have a discussion with council about possibly doing that.
I will certainly pass on to the director your desire to see more proactive code enforcement in gateway areas. And then she can explore with the code enforcement staff what it would take to do that.
Your staff is holding applicants to a higher standard for gateways.
Well, the zoning code does for design, yeah.
Yeah, and a general plan has a whole chapter that we built. So you're part of the equation, you're holding applicants to a higher standard for gateways. And we've seen the success of that. I mean, we've got the whole Sprouts area up there that was gateway, and that's very successful. We've got other areas coming in, and finally now, I think, the outlet mall and everything else. And so I think, because of that emphasis that your staff's bringing forward, that code enforcement could be a little more higher standard in that area, too.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Sure. I will-
Commissioner Ruhland.
I will make a motion. I will move that we adopt Resolution Number PC 18-018, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of San Clemente, California, approving amendments to discretionary sign permit 98-70, AMCUP 18-138, Arco Master Sign Program. Our request to modify an existing service station master sign program to allow for changes of copy and color, and alterations to the canopy and pump signs located at 2749 North El Camino Real. Let's see, with the addition of condition 15, that the color temperatures of LED lights will be no more than is currently allowed at the outlet mall freeway signs. Is that, check with our attorney.
Do we have a second? We have a second? A tally? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, we have no more items for public hearings, we have new business. Excuse me? 7-0, excuse me. Want to welcome our new commissioner, Chris Kaczynski.
Kaczynski.
Very good. Can you basically introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself for us and the public?
Well, my name is Chris Kaczynski. I've been in San Clemente for six years now, I own a business. I'm a patent attorney, have a little daughter, eight years old, and a wife. And I'm excited to be in this town, it's such a great town to be in, we can't beat the weather and the architecture here, it's just, and it feels homey. So it's a pleasure to be here.
Well, welcome, glad to have you on here. And then I want to also thank Don for his efforts over the years to chair our commission, and glad you're still here, and the best in the future with your endeavors, so we will move on. And we have a voice count in the audience, welcome. Glad to have you here, you're just watching civic procedures here, well, very good, glad you're here. Do we have any old business? No? Reports and commissions, I know Commissioner Kaczynski wanted to enter something.
I just wanted to clarify this last amendment that we made to the amendment to the discretionary permit. It seemed like this commission was adding a lot of things that could be just done over the counter. I guess, I, a lot of, hold on.
Is this all specific?
Well, we were looking at approving, basically reimagining a sign. And I was curious, what kind of ability does the city have in approving existing signs? And that goes to Lori. Sure.
I can field that. So the sign permit that came to the commission this evening came because the code requires it. I think what's being asked here is, when the change in copy, not copy, but really the sign face is so minimal, is it necessary to come to the commission, or can it be done administratively?
Yes.
And the answer is, it certainly can be done administratively. Staff could certainly cover issues like this. It would only require a zoning code amendment, which could be requested by the commission. The council would have to initiate that, but the commission could give its input that maybe items like this are better addressed at the staff level, as opposed to coming to the commission.
Yes.
The problem, if I could interject here, is, in the time I've been on the commission, signage in this town has been a very emotional and top hot-button issue. It started 2007 and '08 with the outlet mall, which initiated a sea-change of the politics of this entire town, which was over a sign permit for that outlet mall. And in fact, council members were elected, or voted out of office over the whole situation. And so freeway signage and other type signage in this town, freeway-oriented, freeway-visible, all that stuff is a very, very sensitive subject in this town. And so it's been elevated because of that sensitivity. Just kind of to give you a background on it, that's just kind of where we sit right now.
No, I'm sorry.
One of the things from this specific sign package, right, which, I wasn't on Design Review Subcommittee, but that kind of process did result, I think, in us having signs specifically in the gateway area that were, that accomplished the purpose of the signs, but also were, you know, not backlit, or that were backlit instead of being completely illuminated, and doing some things that I'm not sure, you know, would have been handled that way at the counter, not because the counter's not effective, but because they're at the counter and they're not, you know, they're not taking the time to review the packets, you know, for days on end. You know, DRSC is looking at it for three or four days prior to the meeting, and is able to come up with some of those questions, which signage, to Don's point, is emotional. And we have to, especially with the dark size initiative that we have, you know, it's an important part of the, of the homey feel and the village feel that, and the architectural preservation that we have here.
And I will say that that's one reason I wanted to get everyone here involved in Design Review, to see the process. We don't dictate to the applicants. The applicants, like this one, are very reasonable and work with us, and we're just looking at either prolifer, proliferation? Proliferation. Size, quantity of signs, not what the text is, we stay away from that, so we're not touching that. And that it complies with any written guidelines that we have to follow. And I know Jonathan has done a good job preparing the package, and I do see that certain signage things, if it's just, we're changing the, well, changing text, they can do without any permit. Text is not an issue.
Well, I thought that what was approved was just basically the same signs that already existed, and they were just changing the look.
Not exactly. Sizes and locations, I think even on this one, they wanted pole signs to indicate the pump numbers and so forth, which was more signage than they currently had, so.
Sure. If, so a part of this, to clarify, was the initial, there was a significant amount of change even before Design Review saw the proposal. So initially, there was like a neon band proposed for the canopy and a variety of other changes. We do have some master sign programs that include a more generic language that would allow for changes from one sign type to another sign type administratively, without us ever coming here, when that is more clearly detailed. That's the case with the outlets, for instance. If a new tenant comes in, they're not going to need to come to any kind of hearing for that change of sign type. In this case, the proposal, especially as initially presented, was significantly different from what was shown. And even by the end, once we had removed some of the things that we wouldn't be able to be supportive of, the original approval was very specific to specific signs and specific dimensions. And if they had left that more generic, a master sign program that specifies materials and dimensions, we would be able to swap out those elements more easily and administratively, as opposed to when, in this case, the specific sign styles were called out in that original master sign program. And so modifying it, as Mel had mentioned, when there's modifications, et cetera, that's what started us in that path to do an amendment for that.
And that was too late today.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't something we did, it was, we would do it differently today. We have that in common.
And I would say, too, the point, though, is well-taken. I mean, what can we, I mean, coming all the way to Planning Commission is a big process, it is, I don't know, what is it?
14 weeks.
14 weeks, something like that is usually the thing. So we want to, you know, at the very least, make that as frictionless as possible and eliminate it if it's appropriate. Since I've been here, I think we've gone through two rounds where we've changed, done zoning amendment updates that do just that, where we've pushed, we've looked and said, like, we used to actually yoga studios, for instance, we used to always, or Pilates, we always used to have to do a conditional use permit for that. And it's like, we always approve it. Why are we doing this? Staff should be approving that, you know, at a lower level. So there's things like that that we find as we go along, that's like, you know, time for a zoning amendment change, this doesn't need to go to Planning Commission. So the point is, well, thank you.
I had an interesting discussion with Cherry today, is in fact, that the same subject in the last couple of years, where with Chris Wright, we went through, you know, I think over six, we looked at 600 items where we pushed things down because our template is so long to get to us, and it's another three weeks longer if asked to go to city council. So there was a huge effort that we went through a couple of times with Chris, who's your detail guy, to get things pushed down to more of an administrator, or a zoning administrator, or staff, you know, waiver-type situations that, so it was a huge effort to try to get things quicker, by lowering them down to a lower level of decision-making.
I would like to ask, planning, in this case, would there be a possibility of streamlining this at all? Or would, could you have streamlined this?
It would be difficult for this specific application. I think proactively moving forward, one of the things that we can do is, when it comes to Design Review for master sign programs, is to encourage the applicant to move in that direction, of having graphics that may illustrate potential signs. And at the same time, on elevations indicating the locations and box widths of dimensionality to those signs, and then specifying materials that the Design Review and Planning Commission would be comfortable with. So keeping it generic in that way, where then, moving forward, that there isn't a requirement for them to revisit something like this, because they're not, they're still within the provisions of what the approved master sign program was. So I think proactively moving forward, that is something that we can do to prevent something like this, that I agree is a very minor change at this point, with the modifications they've made, so minor. And in that scenario, we wouldn't need to be revisiting Planning Commission with an item like that.
Thank you, Jonathan.
In other words, if the applicant comes to the counter and they want to make some change, they want to apply for a master sign program, the staff can advise them that if you make the master sign program specific enough, that in the future, there's some benefit. If it's specific enough for the counter staff to decide, then you may avoid a future discretionary permit. But it has to be specific enough for the counter staff to make a clear decision for that.
Yes, and I think the big thing here is, that's the whole purpose of the master sign program, to make it so they can come in and just change text, they don't have to change the master sign program, it's easy as can be done, and a lot of the shopping sites-
centers have those already in place, so this doesn't happen. Okay, we have some more items on the, any other items that people want to discuss on the Commissioner's items? Do you have a coastal or...
I had an item. I just wanted to say, with Bart's clever notion of rotating people through the Design Review Subcommittee, those of you who choose to do that, I think you're really in for a big treat. I've served with Bart for, on and off, like, four years, I think, on DRSC. I've learned a gigantic amount from him. I continue to learn a gigantic amount from him on DRSC. So, he's a wonderful resource, a real great, you know, not only is ours insights great and his attitude and position great for the people, for the applicants, but also for the people who serve with him. He's a great mentor, a great coach. And so, you're in for a real treat.
And we are there to help the applicant. That's the whole idea, is get their project ready for the Planning Commission review and approve. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, just to comment, we're, I guess, dark the next time, but the next time we meet on August 22nd, we have two gateway issues, which is right back at that same intersection we just talked, which is traffic. And then Camino de los Maras, America's Tire, which is going to go in in place of where Greffins and Baker's Pie is up there, right next to Stater Brothers. That's another gateway issue. So, stand by.
Very good. Commissioner Blackwell?
I just wanted to ask our city planner about the staff waivers that were going to be brought up at this meeting. At what point were we going to talk about those? Well, they weren't on the agenda today, so I'm assuming.
There's a list of them at the back of our...
If you look at number 11, didn't we catch the ones that you mentioned on June 20th that you wanted to talk about?
18-284, 18-371, and 18-372. Did we have a discussion about that?
No. You may recall the last meeting, it was very late, and I thought those were the three you told me you wanted to see on this agenda.
Yes, that's right.
Right. So, I'm sorry, what were you expecting?
To have a discussion about those projects.
You can talk about them tonight, if you like.
Yes. Well, we were going to call them up for discussion. That was my...
Okay, but you cannot do that.
Why can't you?
The Planning Commission does not have the ability to call up decisions that have been made by staff or the zoning administrator. You can look at these documents that we provide, and you can talk about them, but you can't take any action.
I see. Well, the offer was from you, actually, to call them up. So, I agreed, and I said, yes, let's call them up.
Well, I had been told that the Planning Commission had the ability to call things up, but when I started to review the minutes, I went to the code and discovered that you don't. And then I talked to Mel, and he confirmed that the Planning Commission did not. But I had been told that you did have the ability to do that.
In fact, she and I had a discussion on that today, and we've never had that capability. No. And I told her during the time of this Chris Wright 600 items, as we pushed things down, we entertained a zone change to possibly have a call-up capability. The community development director at that time was, Mr. Holloway was vehemently opposed to that, and we kind of backed off. And so, we never forwarded to the City Council any call-up. It would be a zoning amendment change. These have always been provided for information to look at. And I, in fact, as a man, of course, always do and commented to her that Adam Attamian stepped in from code enforcement and was the zoning administrator, and looked at the minutes, and they did, but he actually did a pretty good job.
Okay. So, I guess my question at this point is, well, why are we even including it? It's a historic bit of information, rather than letting us know in advance. So, we have an opportunity to comment and add that comment to your, to your decision-making process. Otherwise, it's a non-issue. Really becomes more of a filler of paper than anything else because there's...
It's just FYI.
Sherry, if I may ask a question, this, I understand this is a FYI only, but you also said, we're not going to take any action, but can we talk about it?
Certainly. You can talk about it.
You can talk, but you can't take any action.
Okay. So, if certain planning commissioner wants to talk about and make some comments, he or she may.
You certainly could make comments, but you couldn't undo the decision. You couldn't take any action to say, for instance, we don't think that you should interpret the code that way.
I understand.
We can't give direction.
But it doesn't need to be agendized.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't need to be agendized.
It doesn't need to be agendized?
It does not need to be agendized. We can talk about it now.
So, who can? The only way for these items to be discussed is if they're on the agenda.
Right.
So, for any discussion, they have to be listed. You can't take action, but you can talk about it. If they're not on here, you can't talk about it.
Okay. So, Mel, then, last time, we brought, last meeting, there was concern for these three items. And the request was made to call them up at that time to the next meeting. In fact, it's noted here in the minutes. So, at that point, the expectation was that it would be placed on the agenda. If it was placed on the agenda, would it be subject to discussion?
They can be discussed right now.
Okay.
So, they're on the agenda for discussion.
Just a non-actionable item.
This isn't an appeal, right? It's just, you can give your opinion, you can talk about it till midnight, you just can't take any action.
I see.
Okay. Is there any discussion on these three items?
I have one point of question, which is...
Commissioner, tell.
Your comment about, we can't discuss that we think you interpreted the code correctly or incorrectly.
You can discuss, you can't provide direction.
On the actions that have been taken, can we provide direction on future similar circumstances?
I think you would have to put something on the agenda.
Well, I think the city planner provide the...
Because let's, you know, theoretically, and I don't know what those items are, I wasn't at the meeting, but let's say that we feel that that was a misinterpretation of the code. I don't know whether that was or was not, but let's just feel, say that what's done is done. They've already been approved, right? So, once it's approved, you're, that horse is out of the barn. But going forward, we say, hey, we don't think that's the right way to approve it. Can we have that discussion?
If that discussion can apply to any of the items that are listed, you absolutely can. So, let's say that staff waiver 18-284 has a similar fact pattern or similar law that would apply to it as a previous decision that you weren't satisfied with. You weren't satisfied with the legal interpretation that underlied the decision. You could absolutely give your opinion and direction to staff regarding 18-284, as also applies to the previous decision, and as applies to future decisions when it comes to those legal principles or fact patterns. Absolutely.
Good word.
Okay. I will say, because we had discussed this, I don't know, three, four years ago, I think, you know, the kind of a call-up, having a call-up procedure for these kinds of things in the Planning Commission. And I think almost no one on staff now was here during that time. But the, kind of, the staff looked into it, and we had a lot of discussion on it. And actually, per, you know, Chris' original comment, we realized, oh, if we do this, then we build into every current application that goes to the zoning administrator, you know, weeks into the schedule that someone has to deal with. Because maybe we'll call it up, maybe we won't, but it has to be accounted for and accommodated if we decided to call it up. So, there was kind of a decision to maybe draw a bit of a bright line that says, okay, there's the zoning administrator. If it's only something for the zoning administrator, it's a shorter process, and it gives people a lot more predictability than if they go through the Planning Commission. So, you know, that was...
Our administrator's template, it's still six or eight weeks, I think, Sherry?
Yes.
Yes, you'd be adding weeks to that, at least.
Okay. Let's stay in order.
And, I do have one more unrelated comment to what we were talking about.
Finish up and...
I hate to do this at the beginning of the term, but I found out today that I will be away on business next week. So, I will need a replacement for the Design Review Subcommittee meeting.
Very good. We will work that out.
All right.
Commissioner Wu.
I just want to make a comment. Even though our discussion is not going to change the result of these three items, but it's always good to communicate, I think, to tell the zoning administrator or the staff what the planning commission thinks about those things, so that can be considered by the staff in the future.
Very good.
So, it's for mutual information.
Okay. Do we have, matter of fact, I will actually welcome Don to do a motion.
I adjourn.
I have so many...
I know how to do it. I move you to adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Study Session and Planning Commission, to be held at 6:00 PM on August 22nd, 2018, in Council Chambers, located at 100 Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California, as the August 8th, 2018 Study Session and Planning Commission meetings have been canceled due to lack of business.
Second. Do we have a motion by Don Brown, and second by Jason Tally? Do we have a vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As a 7-0.
I'll be now.